Hall meeting to order, City of University Heights, May 14th, 2024. We're in the community center and we want to welcome everyone tonight. So nice to see a nice group in the audience. And all four councilors present and one is Nick Herbold is on Zoom. Nick, you got a little bit of a cold tonight?
Yeah, I didn't want to spread this around, so I'm just at home.
You, Nick. So we're going to go through approval of minutes. Mike said around April 9th, minutes and April 23rd. Are there any additions or corrections to either minutes? There are none, the minutes, both minutes are approved by unanimous consent. And then before public input, I invited two special guests tonight. And who are the artists of our herkeys in town? And Cameron is here and I haven't met you, Cam, right? Are you Cameron?
No, that's not Cameron.
Oh, is that? Are you?
Cameron's not here.
Okay. Shoot, I'm sorry, I didn't, I just been looking at pictures and I think. Sorry, because I haven't met her, but Archie's here tonight with his parents. So nice that you came, Archie, because we're just thrilled that you're the artist here. And he has the herky, America's Best Idea Herky down at Triangle Park. And he's here with his dad Charlie and his mom Erica. And so would you want, you want to step up to the podium? And I think we got some pictures of you that you sent when you were making her. Tell us a little about you and what you do.
Well, I draw, for one.
Yes.
That was my first time like painting, pretty much like I had done. We have like pretty bad acrylics at home that we got from like Hobby Lobby, like old craft things. So I painted with those like once or twice. So this is like my first like huge project. It was so fun. It was a lot of work, but it was super satisfying in the end.
What grade are you in?
I'm in seventh grade.
Wow. Wow. Very cool. I mean, the last time we had a herky, you were three years old. Wow. So this is you working at your, in your garage or in your studio?
Yeah, in our garage.
Oh, wow. Nice garage. And yeah, tell us about America's Best Idea.
Well, that was, that was all my mom. She loves national parks. So we've been to quite a few. We took a trip to California and we stopped at like quite a few like Grand Canyon, Arches, to visit my dad's great aunt and uncle out there and he stayed for like a couple of weeks and then he drove back. And I think we did that like twice, right? We did that twice. So we hit a lot of national parks over there. And we just recently, actually while I was working on herky, we went, we did like a couple of day, like two day, a two day trip to St. Louis. Uh, so that was really fun. I actually added that one like right here. That was fun to like, oh, I've been there and then I painted it on there.
Yeah, you really have to go up to it to see everything. How many national parks are on herky?
Did we say like 27?
Wow. Front, side, back. Really amazing. Yeah. Very nice. Uh, yeah, oh, there you go. You can see up close. Wow. So this is the first time you use that type of paint? Wow. Because they require you to use a certain kind, right?
I think they recommend it. I think it was recommended and if you don't, it's just like for safety that it won't wash off and they do lacquer it, but I think it's recommended.
Oh, okay. Very good. Very good. And you know, I love that you put on his muscle, the Mount Rushmore. That was good placement there, I thought. It was lovely. And you were in the newspaper, I think like the front page, right? You're like the celebrity. Obviously, you're one of the best herkeys to put you on the front page and everything. Very cool. And yeah, so whose idea was it to do this? I know there's like an application. Your dad was telling me there's an application.
Yeah, it was actually him. Because you know, we've been to the one before and he thought it was so much fun. She's like, okay, like you should do this. So he printed it out the application and I was like, okay. I didn't really know like it was that serious. So I just like let it sit there. And then it became like a couple of days before the, like the deadline came in. So I was like, well, we better start going around ideas. So I maybe did like one and then mom was like, what if you do national parks? So I was like, okay, that could be kind of cool. And dad was like, ooh, what if we call it America's Best Idea? Isn't that what it is? So yeah.
My goodness. A real family. Does council or staff have any questions for Archie?
Have you ever seen the Ken Beres documentary on American Parks?
I haven't.
Oh, it's a great, you gotta watch it. Great documentary.
Well, it was a really fun event that day because he brought his whole homeschool group. How many were there, like 40, 50?
I think it was around like 60.
I couldn't really get a good picture because there were so many kids around and they brought cake and it was, and drinks, it was lovely. Yeah, we're just thrilled to be able to meet the actual artist. And you know, and that way when people come and talk to us or residents, we can tell them about you. And in fact, I talked to a few people and I go, you know what? I saw him in the paper. Saw that one. I said, I know, yeah. So you're already a celebrity, right? It's wonderful. Well, we're so glad you stopped by to see us, Archie.
Hey Louise, can I say a few words?
Yes, please.
I tried to choke it out with my, my voice struggling. I just want to say, great job, Archie. Such a great contribution to the community where it's fun to be able to drive by it pretty much daily right now. You know, some of my kids and they, they're super excited. You know, Max loves, loves a bison. That was, that was his highlight, I think, of seeing it. But yeah, just great job. I knew you had the talent. I remember your drawing from before and just, yeah, so proud of you. So, so proud that we can have this in our community. I really appreciate it.
Oh, thank you so much.
Well said.
Any others?
I like the, isn't it the brand prismatic spring on the back? That's just so clever.
I've already seen a lot of people getting their picture taken with both herkeys. Very nice. Yeah, it's lovely. And you're fairly close here, right? As I understand, you lived by Weber or something? And so you're close, so you can visit your herky frequently. Well, thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate it. And your mom and dad and to meet you. Oh, Erica wants to say.
Well, just thank you. I'm not totally sure of the selection process, but we are so honored to have you as a sponsor. It's a privilege and it's been wonderful. And he especially has also supported and it's just been really a special experience all around. And that was made possible by the city. So thank all of you, yeah, all of you. It's, it's wonderful.
Well, thank you. That's so nice of you. Yeah. Now, you don't have to stay the rest of the meeting. If you're invited, you can leave at any time. Did you have something, Nick?
No, that was just.
I thought I heard it twice. I'm sorry. Well, anyway, we had invited the second artist and this one is Golden Hour Herky. And Cameron's not here, right?
She made come, Louise. I had an email from later this afternoon and she was trying to double some events.
Right. She's a college student at Mount Vernon Cornell College. And maybe if she comes, she can, the golden hour is the hour before sunset and that's why it's pink and blue and yellow. And it has special meaning to her because her grandfather was killed in a farm accident. And so it's kind of a tribute to him and you really need to look at it up close. But hopefully Cameron will come by. Anyway, because she's going to be busy with an internship later in the summer and I don't think she can make it any other day. So, but her father has the business next door. The Edward, Edward Jones, right? Yeah, so that's wonderful. So hopefully Cameron will come. Thank you so much. So now we've got two other guests that want to speak. We have Leslie and David. And you're from the food bank, is that right? So would you want to come up to the podium? Welcome.
All right. Thank you very much for having us. I'm Dave Lash from Iowa City. I'm a former board member in the Community Crisis Services and Food Bank. And Leslie Fitzpatrick is a current member. And it was a treat to hear about the herky. Very much. So the good news is we're not here to ask you for money. We just want to spread a little bit of awareness and information about the community food bank. We do a lot of things at the crisis services from a mobile crisis unit to rental assistance. But we're mostly concerned about the food bank right now because donations are down and the need is up. And we just want people to be aware of that and know what they can do. Leslie?
Do you have some handouts?
I think, oh, I'm supposed to pass those out. Thanks, Mike.
So I'm just going to talk through a couple of points on the handout that David is putting out there. What we're finding right now is that we have a significantly decreased capability to provide food that people need. So there is food, but there's less food or less families yet. The need is growing really significantly. So you'll see at the top of your sheet, it actually says that we need to increase funding for food by 60% to meet the current need. And when we, it gets compounded by things like, you know, summer food program getting cut off, you know, kids in the community. And so we expect that number actually just to go up. Just to go up from here. The next section talks about the types of financial support that community members access. One of the most significant ones is being able to get rental assistance for like a deposit for, you know, rent. Because that's often very difficult for people to come up with. We're so proud of the program that community has that offers that support and just our larger community that's making that possible. And we all need to be talking with our colleagues and our friends and our family members to raise the awareness that we all need to contribute more because it's not quite enough.
A part of the problem, as I'm sure many of you know, is that our state turned down $29 million to go to the food for SNAP or also no food stamps. So and now summer is starting and the need increases in the summer. So we are really short of, you know, federal and state funds that we normally rely on. So it's more than ever to the community to step up.
Any questions for them at all? Thank you for coming by, David and Leslie.
Thank you for letting us. Appreciate it.
Of course. And now we have.
Jerry's, we signed up to talk to him. Who will do Jerry next? Mary asked if she could go last.
Yes, I'm with you.
You know, Mary said she'd have to ask.
Oh, okay. As I understand, Jerry Zimmerman wanted to speak. Is that right, Jerry?
If there's a relevant topic.
Well, we're, oh. I, not during, not during general public comment. Well, okay, got it. Sorry, my mistake.
Oh, okay.
Unless you just want me to.
Okay, then.
Relevance is critical here.
Then we'll have Mary McCann speak. And Mary McCann put this flyer out with the Board of Supervisors.
They sent these around to you, but I think there was a user difficulty with being able to access your emails. So I'm not certain if you receive them or not. See what we do because I still need to drive on to them. You don't worry about Mary or you, whoop. What I'm here to tell you is about the experience that I had quite unexpectedly by going to Board of Supervisors meeting for a very different reason. I sat there when my town's Tiffin, Tiffin's law enforcement contract was coming up for approval or disapproval with the Johnson and Board of Supervisors. And I witnessed three eye votes. Yes, they would support the contract that had taken my city council months to negotiate and two nay votes. And I'm kind of a crazy political person. And I immediately realized the three eye votes were up for reelection. And the two nay votes would find somebody and I knew who somebody would be in that instant would be to make it three nay votes for law enforcement. We have a number of people that call themselves a number of names, whether it's democratic socialists. And I am, I am one of those people who like a raving progressive. And so I should be embracing this, but they had turned against law enforcement, which is not in my nature. So they had somebody else that stepped up that did become part of this vote. Her name's Mary Remington. She has many very fine causes that I support and I understand, but she would be the third nay vote. And so I'm very anxious because what it means and the information that I've given you. I went through the website, the Joint Emergency Communications Center website, where you can pull up all of the different incidents that take place and all the calls that are placed through JSC. And I did count every month to find out how many people in Johnson County are actually accessing 911. And it turns out that it's in the neighborhood of 11,000 to 12,000 people per month in Johnson County who call 911. It's for many different reasons, but if you're willing to pay attention, it means that our society has not progressed to a point where we have neighbors who help each other as much as we used to. And we have work to do. All of us, I'm sure, try to do that. I know city councils definitely try to bring people together. Johnson County has many fine city councils who work to reinvigorate democracy because many of us have felt that what's happening at the state government is not what we expected. So we lean on you heavily to be able to take a look at all these bits of information and understand we have a really pivotal vote that very few people realize. If I had not been there to witness that three eye, two nay, nay, I would have just heard that the contract was approved and would have moved on to the next bit of news that was there. But that's nothing you talked about. And I come from a family of military law enforcement people. Every generation, my same family thinks this is what we need to do. I have five active military members right now. And I'm telling you, these people are the worst at defending themselves. They're the worst at saying, um, could you consider what we're really dealing with here? So I'm hoping that if I go to as many city councils as possible and talk to people, they will, will understand that the Board of Supervisors has ignored this control over law enforcement contracts. And we are in a really critical position right now to either protect the people in Johnson County and make it possible for them to have the law enforcement that you all are going to negotiate for them. Everything that you do here, you understand exactly what's going on in your streets. You know the people, you know the streets, all of the city councils do. We want you to be making those decisions for us, not someone else that is not representing the majority. I don't have a problem with people being represented within the Board of Supervisors. That is constituency within Johnson County. I understand that, but not in the majority to be able to overrule and treat with prejudice every contract from Johnson County, law enforcement treated with prejudice. So that's why you draw your attention to all these numbers and hope that you will vote for the incumbents.
Are there any questions for Mary? Thank you for coming, Mary. We appreciate it. So we're going to go, okay, so public input, public wanted to speak at a different time. Is that right? Okay. Is there anybody else that wants to speak? Pat, you're in the back. Do you want to speak? Okay, thank you. We'll go on to mayor's report. And as I said in my written mayor's report, as we move forward, I think the city needs to look at options because of budget deficiencies that Steve Cool talked about last month when we were finalizing the FY25 budget. And you know, state legislature came down with some new laws. And so that affected our budget also. And we, I was at a meeting with Steph and Steve Ballard and myself going over part-time to hire a part-time city administrator. And we were looking at the job descriptions. So we all had done separate homework, which is, you know, I talked to a lot of small town city administrators and they looked up a lot of small town city administrators too. And we were coming together and this was just after the state legislature came down and I was, you know, we have this budget deficit and fear that we couldn't hire a city administrator at this time. And so I was looking at some options. And when I was talking to some of these small towns, they mentioned lost local option sales tax, local option sales service tax. And you know, we've had that before in '09 to '12. And so I asked Steve to look at it. And so the reason it's on the agenda right now is because of the short timeline that he found out and as he says in his report. And so that's why it's on, we don't have to make a decision tonight. We have the 28th with a special meeting and we have June 11th, but the decision has to be made before June 12th. And it's just one option. And because of the timeline, I wanted the council to look at it and study it. And so Steve sent around his legal report. And I wanted, if you could just review some of the top items from what it means.
Yeah, so as Louise said, there was a local option sale and service tax in parts of Johnson County, you know, 15 years ago or so, for about three years. And since then, there've been a lot of several changes to the Iowa law regarding lost. And the most recent changes, they're, they're pretty peculiar to read. You know, sometimes people talk about legislation being like sausage making. And if you read this, if you read this statute, there's just a very few counties where, where individual cities, regardless of whether they're contiguous to other cities, have the opportunity, have the, the right under state law to submit the question to voters whether they ought to have a local option sales tax. The council can't impose a local option sales tax. Council can just put it on the ballot. The voters have to vote for it. But, but the, but there's one, one section of the statute says that if you're in a county with a population based on a 2010 decennial census, county with a population between 130,000 and 131,000. Okay, Johnson County in 2010 had a population of 138,800. So that was written for Johnson County. And who was pushing it and how they got that deal? I don't know. But, but that was, that was changed in, in 2018. And since then, several cities in Johnson County have adopted the local option sales tax, most recently Tiffin last September. And the way, well, so, so the, the local option sales tax from a city's standpoint can be put on an election ballot in, in one of two ways. One, it can be, it can be part of the regular city election. Regular city election happens in November of every odd number year. Excuse me, every other odd number year. Or no, every odd number year. They are, yeah, right. Sorry. Or by, by a special election. Special elections by, by law can only be called at certain times. And when you're in a general election year like 2024, there are these blackout periods where the legislature says to county auditors, we're not going to let cities or anybody else put a special election on you because we know you're going to be, we're busy on this, et cetera. So there's only, so the next opportunities for a special election, should the city want to, city council want to present this to voters is September 10 and March, whatever the Tuesday, second Monday is in March of 2025. If you, if the council put it on the ballot, if the voters adopted it, then, then the tax would go into effect the following January 1, if it was adopted in September or July 1, if it was adopted in March. So the next possible special election is September 10. And the law requires that the city council give the auditor 90 days notice of, of that special election. So the last date to walk into the auditor's office and say the council would like to have a special election is June 12. And so as, as Mayor Fromm said, you know, if the council adopted something tonight, fine. If the council wanted to adopt something on the 28th of May, fine. And, and the last time, regular June meeting, which is June 11. And I, and I talked to the auditor's office just to make sure because I said, you know, I can do the math. But, but you know, we have a meeting on the 11th. Can we bring it on the 12th? They said, yes, you can. So, so you have, you don't have to do this tonight. You don't have to do it at all, of course. But that's, that's the general process. Steve Cool is better equipped to speak to these specifics than I am. But as you know, as you know, there have been, the legislature has over time restricted the city's budget, to be blunt. They're, they've changed the way the property taxes are figured and legislative rollbacks. They have eliminated certain, what are called special levies. You know, there's a, there's a general levy that cities may impose that has a maximum rate of $8.10 per $1,000 evaluation. But then there are these, these series of, of special levies, you know, library or the convention center or, you know, concert hall, different things, some of which the City of University Heights has and has in the past adopted a special levy for. And some of which the City of University Heights doesn't have, never had the opportunity to have. Transportation service. Well, we, we have a contract 2080 agreement with the City of Iowa City with seats. So I think we've availed ourselves of that. There was a liability insurance special levy. But the legislature has taken some of those away. And so, you know, anyway, I have been asked by several council members over the years and, and several community members, what about like these Airbnbs? You know, can't we, can't we charge them a registration fee? It seems as though they're more popular in, in the city than they had been. I, I don't really know. I had a cousin that came into town for his son's graduation over the weekend. He stayed in an Airbnb in Grandview Court. And yeah, and the answer is no. The legislature says that the city cannot charge a registration fee for, for Airbnbs and short-term rentals. So those are a few examples. And I'm mentioning that because as, as the mayor said, you know, you try to do the budget and, and look for possible sources of revenue. And this one came up. When it came up, in our first conversation, my reaction was, yeah, I'm not sure we can do that because we're contiguous to Iowa City. Well, we're contiguous to Iowa City. We're not really contiguous to Corralville. And in the past, there were these kind of goofy rules about if you were contiguous, then at least, you know, someone's, the bigger community had to vote for it or it didn't matter what the smaller community did. And these recent legislative changes changed that. As I said in my report, then if, if the City of University Heights, if the voters of the City of University Heights adopted lost, then what happens is anything subject to sales tax in the City of University Heights has an additional 1% tax. So instead of it being a 6% sales tax, it would be a 7% sales tax. And, and those funds, then that, that 1%, the additional that's generated through lost gets pooled with all of the other lost revenues from communities in Johnson County that have adopted lost. So Lone Tree Hills, Solon, Tiffin, Swisher. Okay. And then from that pool of funds, there's a, there's a formula that's spelled out by the legislature that again, I think Steve could explain better than me, but, but 20, 75% of those funds get distributed based upon the, the city's population as a percentage of the communities that have lost. Communities that have lost, based on, I think the same decennial um uh census. Twenty five percent gets based, based on uh. The city's tax levy rate as it compares with these other lost cities, so. It's, like I said, it's kind of a com- complicated formula in my mind, I don't know where, I don't know where it came from, I don't know what. Interest is trying to serve, but that's what it is. My point is, all the lost money gets pooled together from all the communities in the county that have lost and then it gets distributed according to this um, according to this formula. I don't know the tax revenue, the, the sales tax revenue that's generated in uh by University Heights. Businesses that, that uh uh that charge sales tax. So I probably shouldn't say much, my guess is that, 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 that we would be taking more from that fund and we would be contributing. If you think about other communities and, and the likely number of businesses. That they have in their communities and you think about everybody charging one percent more and having all those funds put together. And then having them distributed, not according to what you put in, it's distributed according to your population and according to your um. Your uh tax levy, um I, I think there's, there's some potential upside there if you wanna look at it. That way, but whether you look at it that way or not, that's the formula and that's uh, that's. That's where things uh historically have been and as I said, uh they changed now. The other thing that has changed um. Significantly uh is that, and, and this plays back to the, 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 the time when county had uh or communities. Town and county or communities in the county had the, the local option sales tax. There used to have to be a sunset clause on it, so if, if voters voted, if, if, if there was a ballot issue, should there be lost? It would say, should there be lost for five years or three years or whatever? And, and the legislature has changed that now so that um, that a community, if it wanted to. Could put a sunset clause on the ballot or it could just say it's indefinite, in which case. If it's indefinite, if the voters approve it, then, then the, the one percent. Lost continues until there's another election uh that, that, that takes it, that takes it off, so. If voters approve the lost, uh and then three years later, the council says. Well, we think it's a bad idea, we don't wanna do this anymore, uh the council has the option to put it back in front of the voters, council can't take it away.
And then you were talking about the fifty percent of the collection has to be for.
Yeah, thanks, thank you, so uh i- in the, in the resolution that I prepared, uh. One of the things that the um. That the council has to do if it wants to put this on the ballot is it has to tell the auditor. This is what we want the ballot to say. And the state law says that you have, the, the city will have to specify. Uh its intentions for using that one percent lost. And the state law further says that fifty percent. Of that state, of that lost uh revenue. Must be uh attributed or assigned to uh allocated. To a property tax relief, and so um. That's, that's what it would say on the ballot, that's what, that's how it would play out, in fact, if the city was, was receiving lost revenue. Fifty percent of those revenues have to go toward property tax relief, the other fifty percent can go for anything that the council uh. Would like to spend money on lawfully, um uh and the council could specify that. Uh you know, on the ballot, it could say fifty percent for property tax relief and fifty percent for road improvements. Or it could say fifty percent for property tax relief and fifty percent for roads and parks and anything else that's legal for the city to do. Or whatever, that second fifty percent, the council has a significant amount of leeway. But the first fifty percent must go for property tax relief and it will be specified as such on the ballot, it's put on the ballot.
Thank you, Steve, um I, I contacted the Department of Revenue and they sent this formula that you looked up and then. Math isn't my best skill, so I sent it to our expert. Uh our tax accountant, our city accountant, Steve Cool, and said. Uh could you figure out based on this, and we don't have all the numbers, but. Uh could you help with the formula of what it means to University Heights?
Yeah, a- actually I do have some numbers here, I'll try to keep this real easy to follow here. Um I was able, well, um. Somebody at the uh was Ricky Shields.
Yeah, I mean.
Initially came up with some information and then another person in the Iowa Department of Revenue. Uh to get specific information here, so. Um anyway, that person was aw- awful kind and what she did was uh. The uh current allocation schedule that's on their system, she made a copy of it and what she did was she added. University Heights information, so going forward whenever this is. If, if it gets voted for approval. We already will know that for every one hundred dollars of lost money. That is paid to the state from Johnson County. University Heights will get twelve dollars and seventy six cents back. About, about one eighth of it, um. I also got a, found a table that has. Estimates from the Iowa Department of Revenue of how much in the fiscal year twenty three, twenty four was gonna be paid out to the. Participants in the lost. Um this was based on uh the numbers I have here was before Tiffin came on, so. Between Hills, Lone Tree, Solon, Swisher and. There's a very small part of West Branch that's in Johnson County, hundred residents, these are the five participants. Basically as of a year ago that were in this. Anyway, the Iowa Department of Revenue estimated that in these five community areas. Uh a total of not quite one point nine million dollars of lost money would be generated over the year. And there. They started it that way, now it's based on actual collections and not these estimates. So anyway, about one point nine million, this was before Tiffin came on January first. Uh I have no clue how much. Tiffin's gonna add to the one point nine million. Uh but anyway. I used. I used the one million eight hundred and seventy thousand that the Department of Revenue was estimating. If, if we were participating in that right now. For our share, we would get two hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars over the course of the years lost.
What did you say?
Two hundred and thirty eight.
Two hundred and thirty eight, okay.
We'll just say two hundred and forty thousand, so what that means is. Um what Steve was saying, half of that or one hundred and twenty thousand would have to be used to reduce property taxes. The other hundred and twenty thousand left over, we can use for whatever we need to do. Um I mean, I can't speculate on how much that's gonna be, cause Tiffin just started, we don't know how much. You know, they're gonna generate between now and June thirtieth. Um but anyway, I, I just bumped the number up a little bit. Uh maybe to be a little bit more dramatic, but if it was two and a half million. Our share then would be three hundred thousand and we would take a hundred and fifty thousand to reduce property tax and the hundred and fifty thousand. Would be for the city to use for the budget. Uh last meeting um on the twenty five, fiscal twenty five budget. Uh we were looking at a deficit, you know. Hundred and fifty, hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, and so the lost money would. Go a long ways on fill on this budget gap, the financing gap that we have. So anyway, that's just uh. Just some basic information, food for thought on how much this. Lost money could amount to for the city.
Does council have any questions right away that they wanna ask Steve or Steve? I have one. I, how do you figure the uh property tax relief?
Um.
Can you speak up too, I wanna make sure everyone.
The easiest way to do it. Uh let's go back to the example of two and a half million and we get three hundred thousand, so half of that is a hundred and fifty thousand. Right now, the employee benefits and payroll taxes levies is a hundred and forty something thousand dollars. So if we got a hundred, we got the three hundred thousand dollars of lost. That hundred and fifty thousand, half of that hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we would actually be removing that levy. From the annual budget process, so, so instead of having a cumulative property tax rate of eleven dollars and eighty something cents. We're gonna go down to, I don't know, ten dollars or something like that.
I see.
So that's how that works, so. Um. The, the disincentive of keeping lost going forever is if you have to keep using half of it, what happens with we totally eliminate. Property tax, then what happens? Cause altogether, I don't remember the total, um. What, what uh, uh I might have that number, it seems like our total property tax is about one point one million dollars. So if we would chop off a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, that's only gonna. Last about seven or so years of doing that, then we got a problem, you know, probably have to terminate the loss, so. But we'd have to keep applying half of that annual lost money against. Property tax levies.
I see. Any, anyone have any questions right now? Cause I was thinking maybe you wanna speak now, Jerry?
Which businesses pay sales tax? Who, who pays sales tax?
Well, if you come up here, then actually. Otherwise, the people on Zoom can't hear you because it picks it up.
I'm just not stressed for it.
Well, you look fine.
I never. Um I'm Jerry Dimerman, I'm Maggie's Farmway Fire Pizza.
Thank you, Jerry.
Grand Avenue and uh glad to be here. Um which businesses are, who, what's the source of sales tax at University Heights now?
Well, it'd be the hotel and Stella and the businesses here.
And Maggie's.
Yeah, yeah, that's it, right? And. It, it's really interesting to hear the discussion, cause your process is way ahead of the logic of this debate, as usual. And the logic of the debate begins with, do you know anything about the economic conditions, the financial conditions of the businesses that are here? Answer, no. Nobody's had any inquiry about that. You don't know about it and we do. And then when you talk about. If we pay, the city pays, that, you know, what our. Money going, it's not your money, it's our money, it's the business's money, it's the customer's money and. Businesses do a lot more than sell stuff, I mean, I don't, I. And unless you know. Our financial situation and what we do with that one percent and two percent and five percent. In our donatory activities throughout the year, how can you make this decision? I mean, what kind of businesses do you want us to be? You are helping to define that now and I, I think it's way premature work. Particularly given, and I haven't kept up with the politics of University Heights since I left being acting mayor. Um but the, the. What many of us expected was we were gonna be. Wallowing in cash. From motel packs and all these other improvements that, that happened, we were gonna be rich. All of our economic woes were gonna be gone. And. Clearly, that's not the case, I'm wondering why. And everybody blames on the state of this, that and uh it's the, right now, and I'll take responsibility for this. Doesn't make any sense to me, if ten years ago we were talking about being flush. And now we're not. Why?
Thank you, Jerry. Would, would you like to speak? I, I recognize you now, you're at Perkins, right, because you look like a Perkins and I probably knew her when she was like in third grade.
Um but it's more embarrassing and I once already just. On the way, um when I was thinking about this, um. I was thinking about, oh man, if someone is comparing my prices to someone else in. I, in Iowa City or Corralville, um and then they learn, oh. You charge seven percent tax, not six percent tax, and you know that sounds like very little to you all, but we. Run off of, like our primary revenue comes from memberships. So all of our clients expect the same price every single month. So then if we then increase due to taxes, um they're gonna wonder where, why are we increasing prices? Um and it just kind of puts a bad taste, at least I feel, for our customers' perception of. Doing business in University Heights. Why would I wanna come to this location and pay an additional fee, not just for bar three, but also sidekick Maggie's? Um and the costs that come with that um in credit card fees. I wish you all could see how much we pay in credit card fees um every single month. So with additional costs for sales tax, then we are, the business. Is the one who has to bear the brunt of the additional costs of the credit card fees. Um so it's, may not seem like much to you, but all of that chips away at our margins. Um and the margins are how Jerry and I pay ourselves. Um and we want to stay in this business, we, we came to this location for a reason. Above that people could walk to our locations. We wanted to be able to be a, a hub for all of University Heights, um and. If you don't have businesses like ours, it's gonna be filled with more and more businesses like. Financial firms. Less and less service based businesses, um and those are the ones that you wanted to have here. So you could have a row of more Edward Jones, more um sorry, Nick attorneys. Or um you could continue to, to invest in the decisions that you make towards the service businesses that are there. So um that is. Uh the few things I wanted to say on, on how I think that this would impact the service businesses in the community.
Thank you very much. Uh does council wanna discuss uh the sales tax today?
What's unfortunate, our speed cameras. Challenged, is that it's gonna be a relief that affected our community? Instead of going to the county, messing with the county, changing tax rates. Is that dead in the water forever permanently, I mean, is this lost something we should look at like one year, two years, three years? Is that speed camera thing ever gonna come back up? Cause I think that would be the best benefit that would benefit University Heights. Versus on the county level, remind me.
I, that's a good question, uh Steve, do you have a good answer for that? Like what?
No.
Is that, I know that Troy reported it was pretty dead, but I didn't know how confirmed that was. Like, what, if it's just on hold for a couple of years or if, if we're, you know, we definitely didn't make it under the. The timeline or what the status is.
Yeah, well, it wasn't a timeline, I mean, there were a lot of. The legislation that was adopted prevents University Heights from having automatic traffic enforcement the way we planned to for. Several reasons, one of which was if you weren't already in place by January one, but there was, there's more to it than that, mostly based on the population of the city. Um I don't have any idea, I mean, the word all through the legislative session was. Maybe, maybe it's got some chance, probably doesn't have much chance and then toward the end, it was all this isn't gonna pass and then it did. And so what are the chances they're gonna reverse course on that? I don't have any idea, um. I don't have any idea, but I know the people that were in favor of it worked for a long, long time to get it adopted. And they were turned away time and again and they finally, this, this semester. And they were turned away time and again, and they finally, this, this semester, this term, excuse me. They paired it with the distracted driving bill and the distracted driving, people said, don't, don't put us with you. We, you know, we should stand on our own. And, and I, and, and what ended up happening, Troy can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think I am. The, the, the prohibition or severe restriction in some cases on automatic traffic enforcement did pass. And the distracted driving bill did not. So they did get separated, but. The one that passed was not the one people thought was gonna pass. So I don't have any idea what will happen in the future. Maybe somebody does, but, but no, Nick, I, I really don't. I also don't know if, if the, if the, the lost legislation changes. You know, such that next year, the, you know, the city of University Heights doesn't have the opportunity to put it on a ballot. I don't have any reason to say that, but like I said, when you read the statute, it's like, wow, this is carved out exactly for Johnson County. And then, and there's a carve out for a couple of other situations that are just as specific that I won't go into. But, but who's to say that those remain throughout the next legislative sessions or not? I don't have any idea. I don't have, nobody said to me, gee, this is, you know, they're trying to take this away. I just don't know.
That's helpful. I appreciate that. You know, my, I think Jerry raises a good point, you know, especially when it comes to community perception. That with the hotel, you know, we're coming to the end of the TIF at some point, that it seemed like we were gonna be pretty flush with cash. So I guess I would at least say we should put it on the agenda for the next meeting. I think it would be fair unless, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but it would be fair, I think, probably to. Have a better answer to Jerry's question, which I, I honestly don't have. I know when I came back on council. We were counting on the speed camera money, and so, you know, we got the budget numbers from the different, you know, people who provided them. It seemed like we were to be, you know, gonna be in good shape. We also seem to have some hotel money coming in. So that could potentially allow us to do some other things. We obviously have the streetscape project that we're gonna be putting money into also. So I, I guess I just don't have a good answer for Jerry, and I think it's a fair question. I also think Maureen brings up a really good, many, many good points when it comes to. You know, the competitive disadvantage. I mean, that is a concern. It'd be almost easier if Iowa City just said they were gonna do it. And I appreciate Louise looking into that and finding that it doesn't sound like they're gonna be doing that, at least in the, the near term. You know, so, yeah, and it is, I mean, it, we, Maureen's exactly right, you know, the, the people like having. Walkable businesses, we're not talking about financial firms and law firms. I definitely get that. And this does happen to Target, you know, if you want to say the, use the word target, I guess, but it does, it does focus on the exact. Businesses that we want in University Heights, I think. But also the ones that have the hardest time in University Heights, honestly, because they just don't have the population. You know, walkable, I mean, there's, it's a nice walkable population for some, but we're kind of in a pocket. You know, whereas downtown Iowa City, you have a lot more. People, you have a lot more public amenities, you know, I was just down there this weekend and reminded of, you know, going out to dinner on Mother's Day. Reminded of the, the nice playground right by all the businesses and, you know, all the neat things to do downtown that we just don't have. To make things lively over here. So, yeah, I mean, I think these are all good points, but, but I also hear, you know, very clearly from this, I think both Steves, that. We would be getting more money back from this than we would be taking, putting into it basically, which, which makes sense. If it's not based on the sales tax you paid, it's based on these other factors that weigh in our favor. Then it would be nice to utilize that, you know, that advantage. But it would seem like, you know, some part, part of this would be to make it so it's not just totally on the backside. You know, especially people, you know, like Maureen's business where it's, they really do, does sound like we, they compare prices pretty, pretty distinctly. It's not as even as much as maybe Sidekick and Maggie's and Stella and the, the hotel. Where, you know, maybe the items are a little bit different if you're paying for an exercise class and one's, you know, going up in price or costs more than, you know. Especially if you're not living super close, you know. So anyway, I don't want to talk on, on, but I guess my, my general thought would be. To not vote on it tonight, but to put it on the next agenda and be able to, to maybe get a little bit more information on these, these points.
Thanks, Nick. I think that's a very good idea because in fairness to the council and the public. This has just been talked about since Friday, when Steve sent out his report, and so that's five, six days. And I think it would be, I think the council would like to talk to other businesses, other residents. Other people in the community, outside the community, and get more input. So I agree, this council. Want to just put it on that, let's put it on the May twenty eighth agenda. Which is a special meeting for the budget amendment, and then we'll talk again then. Okay? Thank you. Thank you for coming, everyone. We really appreciate it. And nice to see a full room. With residents and special guests here tonight. Is there anything else that? Oh, I wanted to say with my mayor's report, you know, I have it written out. And I wanted to just say the one thing is, August of twenty twenty five, University Heights is ninety years old. And some of you might remember our seventy-fifth birthday celebration in twenty ten. And we had a parade and we had a special events and we had closed golf view and we put some inflatables over there. And so with the ninetieth birthday party, we can do something similar, we can do something entirely different. I just think we ought to start thinking about it now, because it would be fun to have a ninetieth party, I think. So, and then the other things on my mayor's report, you rail, so I, there's minor things, so. We'll go to the legal report. Next, and Steve, we have, oh, second consideration of ordinance number two fifty four establishing the position of city administrator. For the city of University Heights. And so that's before you. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Steph, is there a second? Second by Doug, discussion. Okay, roll call vote.
Gun?
Aye.
Herbold?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Schroeder?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Second consideration passes five zero.
Are there any questions for Steve Ballard about his report or anything?
I got one question real quick.
Sure.
Back it up. That number that Steve come up to two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars if we did loss. We gotta cut that in half and said fifty percent would be for relief for sales tax to, like, businesses? Is there any way we can do like a tax rebate or credit or to go back to the, the few businesses that we do have?
That I'm not sure. You can directly rebate it against that.
Yeah, I don't think you have to go by the lab.
Yeah, I don't really to be a, you know, director of it. I think that there could be things that the council could do. The, you know, policies and, you know, revenue opportunities that the council can make available to businesses in the city, if the council wanted to do that. So, I mean, I think, I think in an indirect way, the answer is yes.
I'm just thinking if, if, you know, this is something we could do directly to the few businesses that we do have, I think that would be beneficial if, you know. We are stuck with laws, but again, I guess that'll be up to the voters.
Okay. Any other? Did I copy off the old agenda? Because I kind of skipped over finance report.
Finance is the first report under community reports.
I know, and?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're not there yet.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. The only other thing with my report was Stella has their class C liquor license renewal. Terry Gert was able to do the fire and structure and health inspections yesterday. So they are all in compliance, cells, management team has done their background checks. They've submitted everything through the alcoholic beverages division online. So last step would be council approval, and that's just a simple motion.
Okay, is there a motion? Motion by Tim, the second?
Second.
Second by Nick. So discussion. Okay, all in favor for a renewal of Stella Restaurant Class C Liquor License, say aye.
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 Is anyone opposed? Okay, looks like it carries five zero.
And Jerry just walked out. Maggie's renewal is next month, because.
Okay.
Spring is liquor license renewal season, so Maggie's will be the one that should be on the June agenda.
Thank you. And is there anything else you wanted to add? Okay. And John Brown, you submitted a report and warrant list and updated your warrants list. And here it is on the.
I don't, I don't have the most recent. Sorry. Can find that just a second.
And, well, you sent it, oh, I don't know, about an hour ago, the amended list?
Well, the one who sent you that an hour ago was just.
Yeah, right. Okay, so the council had a chance to look it over?
The only thing I would just point out for council is that the Swisher Tract. Work fifty percent of it is on there as a warrant. I know we've already passed that, but in talking to Sustainable Landscape Solutions. It seemed to make sense to make a progress payment. They were fine with a fifty percent progress payment. I would obviously want, before we pay the rest of it, we want to make sure that. We, you know, they've done what we, what we asked them to do, what they, what they've agreed to do. So, yeah, that's down a little ways, but it's. It's the bot, I don't know if you want to scroll down, Mike, but it's at the bottom there. Yep. So I just, that was not an ordinary sort of thing, so I just wanted to bring it to council's attention, see if there are any issues.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the list? Hearing none. Will council approve the list of, you know, of warrants? Hearing no objections, the council will, the, the list will be paid by unanimous consent. That's the first time I've ever said that. That's why I couldn't figure it out. So, any questions for John? Okay, we'll go on to the next thing, which is finance. Okay, finance. So. This is a discussion of mending the FY twenty-four budget. At a, well, it's to get a, a mending in a public hearing, right? Setting a public hearing for that date. It doesn't really say that, but that's what we're doing on five twenty-eight twenty-four. And so Steve, did you, is it okay if Steve starts, or did you want to start, Nick? He said Steve can start. He's good.
Well, I've got the worksheet here. What I, what I've done is, we have the original budget on the left column and the amended budget on the right column. And then on the explanations there, what I tried to do is just for the larger items, just have a general explanation. As to why I've increased or decreased. Several of the other expenses, small things, like office supplies and stuff, we may have budgeted. I changed it to wherever we're going so far this year, but I'm not gonna go with those small things, but. Anyway, we'll just start right at the top on first page here. I'll just go down quickly and. We have a couple of changes that have come up since I. Created this file here. First of all, on the very top in the property taxes. On the fifth line down, insurance levy. I have no idea where eleven thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars came from. It's ten thousand seven hundred. So I must add a formula left on the column or something, but anyway. We can't, we can't increase the property tax. That first number is, they're gonna be identical, so. That just reduces this number by four hundred and forty-five dollars, but. You can't ask for four hundred and forty-five more. Hotel motel tax, we've touched on that before. We're looking, that, the next check should be coming any day now. It is May, middle of May, so we'll probably be getting another large check. Well, the last quarter was, what was that, a hundred and forty-three thousand or something like that? It was a big number. My guess is this payment for, in May is for January, February, March and. And previous check was big because football season, well, we had basketball season, of course, the men's. Team sold every game out and we had some tournament meetings here, so it'll be interesting to see how big the, you know, what's gonna come in on this May check. Through three quarters, we were right at about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I just put a very conservative a hundred thousand dollars for the fourth quarter. We may get more. So anyway, we're looking at, we're looking at a hundred thousand more than we had estimated at the beginning of the year. Three hundred and sixty thousand, now we're at four sixty. Let's see, going down here, building and equipment permits. There were three large building permits the city received in the first couple of months last summer and fall. I don't remember exactly what.
Foreign, foreign school addition.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, that one was, I think, twenty-five thousand, and then there was seventeen, and there was three big ones, so. Yeah, those three totaled fifty, about fifty thousand dollars, so that's why that went from twelve thousand to sixty-two thousand. It's a seventy million dollar project on the addition, and so we won't, I don't think we'll have that many building permits again this, this year. Let's see, going on to the second page here. We have a few minor changes. Okay, miscellaneous revenues. One change I need to make, this is on miscellaneous income, other, right in the middle of the section there, forty-four thousand five hundred. That sale of property, that's from one of the cars. That needs to go down a little further down on the page and other financing sources, sale of police, sale of city property. That's just changing the category on that. The other day, Steve sent me an email that the hotel will be paying to the city. A reimbursement for legal fees of eighteen thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. And let's see. And like I said, other financing sources towards bottom there, that'll be thirty-five hundred for sale of police cars, so. Those are the two big, oh, and then we also added, you know, in miscellaneous police contract services. Throughout the years, you know, in the original budget, because we don't, we don't levy for the. We only levy for the property or the payroll taxes and benefits on the base salaries. So the original budget is just the base compensation on the amended, we pick up the contract revenue. And then also the increase in the wages and the payroll taxes and benefits, it's pretty much a wash, so. So anyway, that's, that's changes on the revenues. Only the third page, the expenses. First section, capital projects. This was updated. I got a lot of information from Ryan on this as far as like. The Gulfview Stormwater Ravine, that's completed. George Street called a sack. May be before or after June thirtieth, put it in as a contingency if something happens on that. Monroe, bump that up to the two twenty-five, it may be less. Just depending on. Construction progress and billing. Melrose Complete Streets, fifty-five thousand. That's, um, design and bidding. That's a pretty close estimate, one more month to go, and Oak Crest, Mahaska has completed one hundred and twenty thousand three hundred, and one other addition way at the top. Uh, Swisher Trac. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and put in the leftover, um, money from the two thousand eighteen bond issue. It was twenty thousand three hundred and eight dollars. Uh, we're not, probably won't spend that all, but we'll put that in there, so we have enough cushion on that. And then the remainder will be in fiscal twenty-five. So, the, the total of the capital projects after the revision here is four hundred and seventy-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars budgeted. Okay, um, in the public safety, I think the only, the only change here is the increase in the, um, overtime wages and benefit, south payroll taxes and benefits for the contract services. Um, and then also, the health insurance went up considerably January first, so we have two help, uh, in lieu payments, and that went from about thousand a month to thirteen hundred and something or whatever, it was, it was a notorious injury saw on that, so it's increasing that, most of the rest of the police costs are about the same, animal shelter, fire, those are saying billing inspections. Uh, okay, going on to the, so this has been on page six. See, okay. Okay, right here in Culture and Recreation Library. Um, when I was doing some work, I could not find where the city ever paid Coral bill for last year's um, money, so apparently they never billed. I put it in here in case they catch it, and if they bill because they've always billed at the very end of the fiscal year, because we had the same problem a couple of years ago. I don't remember what that was, they forgot to bill for two years or something.
We'll pay Iowa City. We have to pay both.
Iowa City pays their share.
Yeah, they bill.
Coral bill.
We had to, we had to pay both. Oh, and Coral has not sent us a bill yet.
Okay. Um, and then the rest of this in the middle, this is just to um, adjust to actually what we're spending out of the hotel motel tax money this year. Um, CBD membership, one hundred and five thousand five hundred. And then, in the other section there, we have, have three bond issues that are paid in part or in full with hotel, hotel money. Okay, going down, Community and Economic Development, uh, five percent. Uh, tips set aside, that's not an actual expense, we put that in, into, uh, reserve funds, so it's not a true expenditure, so we take it out in the final. Uh, the developer, we repeated developer rebate, um, we're basically doubling this, uh, last year's fiscal twenty-three did not get paid until early July, so we've got two years here, so I'll get back on, on track of paying that by June thirtieth. Um, see here, uh, CBD membership, uh, that's in it, that's in the Culture and Recreation class now. Uh, Public Works, this is pretty much engineering fees, street repairs and so forth. Um, most of the repairs and engineering fees information, I got an update from Ryan on the expected amount paid for the rest of the year and added that on what we spent so far this year. Um, let's see here. Uh, snow removal, now first, most of that is all incurred in, like, five days in January. Strange year. Um, that's pretty much major changes in public works. Um, general government did not change very much at all, I don't think anything really stands out here. And then debt service, no change, that was set with the, um, levy last year and, uh, filing of the budget. So the bottom line after the changes here, we're looking at a a deficit of nine hundred and, about nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, but keep in mind we really should back out six hundred and eleven thousand, that was fiscal twenty-three O U P rebate that really should have been paid in June last year. And then the capital projects, uh, we have that money, that was money from the twenty, twenty-two bonds that's available to pay the street projects. So that's money on hand, so we, we don't have like a real true loss here, this current net adjusted, a hundred and hundred, five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars are actually you know, about it breaking across the board, so that is that is pretty much everything on the amendment.
Any comments, questions for Steve Cool? Steve, uh, when are we gonna meet for the, we have a certain date, we have to get this published?
Right, um, I have the PDF almost ready to go, um, it will be published this Saturday, May fifteenth. And
Eighteen.
Eighteen is Saturday.
Okay, now, maybe, whatever, this Saturday. Um, I will get that PDF to you either later tonight or first thing tomorrow morning. Deadline's like two o'clock tomorrow?
Two o'clock tomorrow to have a, we have, it has to be published by the eighteenth, because the amended budget has to be published no less than ten days ahead of the special meeting, since the special meeting's the twenty-eighth. The eighteenth is the last day we can publish. The deadline for publishing in the Press Citizen on the eighteenth is tomorrow at two P M. So but I have given them a heads up that it's coming.
Yeah, we will make that.
Great.
Um, and then after the meeting on May twenty-eighth, I will have the actual form that needs to be signed, and it needs to go down to the county auditor's office along with the resolution. And also the public, and a copy of the publication, so
Can this public notice go on the website early, unlike the other one that had to be?
Uh, you mean the, the public hearing notice, that does not have to be on the website?
But it, I usually put it on there.
That one published already, did I not send you that one? The notice itself, this is, this is the publication of the amended budget itself, we've already done the public notice about the meeting. Did I not send?
No, they meant, no, the, the, what's coming out in paper is the notice of the public hearing, that'll be Saturday.
Right.
So I'll send I get it.
Will you send it to her?
I can send it to you after.
And it can go on the website?
Make sure we know it got published. Okay. So anyway, May twenty-ninth or May thirtieth, uh, you have to coordinate a time to get
Uh, I have to do it on the twenty-ninth, I have a my eighth grade granddaughter is graduating on the thirtieth, the morning of the thirtieth, so I'm available on the twenty-ninth.
Okay. Wednesday, that good for you, okay? We will get it done May twenty-ninth then.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any questions for Steve? Did you want to add anything, Nick?
Nothing to add, I appreciate it, Steve.
Thank you very much, uh, we'll go to Community Protection and Chief Kelsey had submitted a written report. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, I would like to do some shout-outs here, I think that it's, they earned the recognition. You all know that I was out of the country for three weeks, uh, during this last month. There was some severe weather that came through town, and then there was some very politically socially charged protests that occurred at an event at Foreyard by Marriott. And you just have to open up your news app and see anywhere in the country, there's, I mean, you don't want to be featured on CNN for, for how an event like that, uh, went down, and in my absence, Acting Chief Tucker did a fantastic job with both events, but particularly the protests. Uh, he, as soon as I started getting contacted by various intelligence agencies and people being made aware of what was happening, I, I forwarded that all to Daryl, and despite my desire to micromanage from the opposite side of the world, I intentionally did not, I stepped back and I let Daryl handle it, and he did a fantastic job. So shout out to Sergeant Tucker, Acting Chief Tucker for that, and I also wanted to point out that uh, Officer Eddie Jasmine, uh, we hired him eight months ago, maybe about at this point, and he was an out-of-state certified officer, and we were advancing him for certification through the certification through examination process. It's not any faster, I've come to find out, than sending him to the academy, but the benefit is he doesn't have to be at the academy for six weeks, we can still use him here, we can rely on him to cover patrol and study uh, in between calls for service. He just completed that process on the eighth, he went up and completed all the testing, the actual, the actual testing, the assessments that need to be done. Uh, it's not unusual for people, for candidates, to miss, to, to fail certain sections and have to remediate. Eddie was stressing about it, but he put in the work, and on his first attempt, he passed all sections. I think if I'm remembering correctly, his cumulative score was ninety-three percent. So congratulations to Eddie, he is, he is feeling, he's in a much happier place. But if you see him, say something to him about that. Uh, I'm going to skip down the report, but obviously if there are questions when I finish, please, please don't hesitate to ask them. I want to skip down to the protests again, that's item E, and I want to give a shout-out especially to the University of Iowa Police Department for both the information that they were able to provide our department with, and then uh, this protest actually began, the rally point was outside of Kinnick Stadium, so it began on their property, and sometimes these become there's some territorial or turf war things going on, so they had they had their own response to that, which then transitioned over to Courtyard, and their, their supervisor who was tasked with their response and and Acting Chief Tucker worked together seamlessly, um, Tucker and Chris Akers gave up, Officer Akers gave up a trip to Colorado so he could stay and help Tucker with this. They put together an ops plan, they were modifying that op, ops plan up to the morning of the event. Uh, but University of Iowa Police Department provided, uh, both, both guidance and intel and staffing. The Iowa State Patrol provided staffing, Johnson County Sheriff's Office provided staffing, Iowa City Police Department provided staffing, and then Dave Wilson out at the Johnson County Emergency Management Agency provided support, those being everything from signs to just, just some of the the hardware that was needed, so big shout-out to all of those agencies, I wanted to formally get it on our record and, and on our, our feed. It was a very successful event for all parties involved. Uh, everybody got a chance to express their opinion, uh, Sergeant Tucker's, and I've attached just a summary of it, but Sergeant Tucker's goals for the event, number one, free speech. Number two, public safety, including protest, protester safety. That is, that's perfect, and he accomplished all those goals, so if you have any questions about what actually went down beyond what I put in the after-action summary report, I would be glad to field those. The next thing that I am jumping over to is number H, the Fleetwood Finance Leasing Agreement, there is a resolution. Uh, this has to do with our new fleet and equipment uh, lease that we, that has already been presented to you and proposed by sector and has been approved. Sector is the middleman, they're the installer, they're the service provider, they don't actually provide the financing, their proposal included a projected estimate of what lease costs would be, and this lease with, with Fleetwood is actually the lease, the financial part of that, part of that, and that reflects those costs that were in the agreement already, so this is not additional costs, this is just, we don't pay sector who turns around and pays Fleetwood, we pay Fleetwood directly for the lease. It's cleaner that way, plus sector doesn't take on the financial liability. Uh, so that is the resolution that's before you when I'm done speaking on this, and finally, I just want to thank the mayor. Uh, our air conditioner again did not work this spring and
Yeah, I personally fixed it.
She was very quick, she said, she said, Daryl, do what you need to do to get it fixed, I believe they have a right this time, they replaced the core again. They tracked the lines all the way to the roof and found in one of the, I think it was the top floor closets where it's been leaking free on for years, so so that should be fixed, but again, I, uh, in my absence, I'm glad that, again, the mayor, mayor was so quick to respond and, and
Had to fix the door handle, but again, the air
FEMA funds were not approved there, so
I'd rather be cool and just do the plastic handle.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's all I wanted to touch on unless people have questions about any specific item in my report.
Yeah, and point out again about, uh, we didn't, the FEMA funding, that was important, you pointed that out, we did you know, they refused it, but they are appealing.
Correct, as I noted, the, the request for proclamation of a disaster, so we'd be eligible for federal funds for FEMA funds, that was denied, or I think, I don't know that it was denied, so much as not approved, that decision is being appealed. I'm unaware of, of any new information that that would change the decision that was already made, so I'm not hopeful that it'll change, but as as City Attorney Ballard's already pointed out, when you get into legislation and bureaucracy and government, you're never sure what's going to happen, so I'm not hopeful on that, and then I did also mention, there's already been discussed that uh, the state did put the kibosh on any new A T programs, they backdated that if you go to January first. There were other restrictions that also would come into, that also come into play. But barring some new regulations that come into place in the next two years or before the next two years or so, or barring some municipality or government entity challenging jurisdiction, our, our ATA program, A T E program is dead in the water for at least two years, if not forever. That's where it stands as of this moment, but who knows what tomorrow will bring.
Any questions for Chief?
We can still put up speed indication signs like up here at the fire station, can't we?
Absolutely, we can still have radar feedback signs like that, uh, any sort of speed detection and feedback signs, we just can't use any sort of automated system to issue, issue civil lines or criminal fights.
Okay, so as Chief said, resolution number twenty-four twenty-four is before you for the Fleetwood Finance Leasing, for the leasing of vehicles and related materials to the University Heights Police Department, is there a motion? Motion by Steph, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Doug, uh, discussion. Roll call votes.
Herbold.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Schroder.
Aye.
Swales.
Aye.
Gunn.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And Mayor, if, if Mike is able to print that tonight and you're able to sign it, that'd be fantastic, if not, it can be done tomorrow. My, they've been very patient during my three-week absence, but it really should have been done by last month, so I, I appreciate it.
I've got it pulled up, we can do it right after the meeting.
Yeah, Steph, do you have something tonight?
I just had, uh, I wanted to bring forward something that I've been working on with the police, and, uh, it's the information kind of gathering aspect of it right now, but, uh, uh, I don't know if you guys are aware, but we have a crossing guard, an elderly crossing guard that staffs, uh, Sunset and Oak Crest. And he has some mobility issues and he's getting older, and I'm not sure how much longer he's going to be able to do this. And so we're looking into some other options for crossing there. Um, one of the ideas that was brought to us was the push-button activation, like the flashing, uh, rapid beacon system that, uh, stops for pedestrians, um, Stops for pedestrians, um. This would be activated by Harold. He would push the button or any kid that was going up to the crosswalk would push the button. It would also help in the future if something were to happen and we don't have it staffed by a crossing guard. Uh, the other one we're looking at is the little. Cross stop, state law stop for pedestrians within the, the middle of the street and these can be. Either a fixed base or a portable base. And I'll come back with, uh, prices for all of these. I've spoken with Kent Rolston at the NPO J C already. And he's on board with bringing out his crew of people if we'd like them to. And assessing the intersection before school gets out, especially before school gets out, um. To let us know what they think would be best recommendations for safety features at that. Stop and whatnot, and I'd just like to get the rest of council's approval to. Get Kit on board and get him out here before school lets out.
Well, we just need an agreement. We don't need a motion.
Yeah.
We just need counsel to say yes or no. You like the idea? Nick, do you like the idea?
Yeah, I always think getting kind of involved is a good idea.
You say you're good. Okay, I see all five wanted. Moving you. Thank you. Thanks for checking into that. And getting it here quickly before school gets out.
Right, right, and it's gonna do us a big favor by getting it in before.
Yeah, that's awesome. Did you have anything else, Steph?
Okay. I have a question. When did we have our final vote on the A T A E? Was that before January first?
Yeah, and it was, uh, you have to have it, we actually implemented.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was, if the vote was before, it was worth challenging.
Good idea. Well, for what, I'm hearing it to, if we did challenge the state, we run the risk of losing state funding on other priorities, so. They're kind of stiff, are, but it's doing what they want.
Sorry, Steve, I didn't hear that, because you guys voted on that last term, right? And so you're saying it's, it had to be actually implemented?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, Troy, did you want to say something? No.
The, the two-year moratorium, uh, and and Steve Ballard commented on it too, is only one of the items. That's the most obvious one, but that's not the only prohibited piece of legislation that would apply to University Heights. Size of community is another one that we don't meet that standard.
Twenty thousand, right?
Correct.
So, so the legislation said that if you're a community of twenty, fewer than twenty thousand people, you can't issue citations. Automatically, finish warnings, you can't issue citation.
So what are, what are the next steps then in terms of what's been put up already and all of that? Is it, can it just sit there and be a deterrent, or do we need to take it down?
Well, the other question that goes with it that I had is can we keep our. Photo enforced signs up so that would slow people down?
I think that's, I think that is in part what Nick is asking to, uh. Eventually, they would need to come down. I have had conversations with couns- with counselors prior to this about. What's, I mean, can we put up those signs to warn motorists and get them to slow down even absent?
Right.
A system, uh. Probably Kent Rolston, I believe, is going to tell you that it's only effective short term because motorists are going to learn, but I, I. Ryan may be able to say it better than me, but I don't think there's anything that says we have to take them down immediately. I don't know that they'll serve a long-term goal and I already have. A call from one reporter into me that I haven't had a chance to return about where we are on that process, so. I mean, I'm, I'm going to be honest in the information.
Look, we had assigned scheduled fines for zero five, five to ten.
Sure, if we could do that. If you're going to post something like that, that has a lot of information, it's probably better at a stoplight or at least they can look over and read it. On a, on a traffic light post, uh. I don't know, I mean. We're spitballing now or trying to figure out ways like, I mean, we're back to where we were before. How do we slow motorists? How do we slow those last, last ten to fifteen percent down? But the next question. At least temporarily, I think we can leave those things up, Nick. I don't, I don't personally believe that it's. I don't know, we'd have to have further discussion. I would defer to Kent Rolston and to Ryan about whether they should stay when. When they speak of a system that no longer is going to be put in. The last time there was a moratorium, communities that had it. Systems. Those systems were shut off, but the signage all stayed up in place while there was discussion on the moratorium. And part of this two-year moratorium is for them to come up with rules. Or have the opportunity to come up with rules about how they're going to go forward. We don't have a system in place. We, we have poles and signs that. I mean, I don't know, Ryan and I can have further discussion on it, but I don't know that the polls. The people who's. That that right of waste is on their property. I don't know that they're going to want. How will polls stick in there? So I don't know. Further discussion, I don't, I don't have a good answer for you. Nick, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go. To, uh, streets and sidewalks and is it okay if Ryan starts? Ryan.
Um, thanks, Mayor. Uh, I think just, uh. Uh, I I'd agree with, uh, Chief Kelsey's sentiment there on the signs for the photo enforcement signs, uh. Generally speaking, I'd say if they're, the sign's not applicable, you'd want to eventually take it down, but. Um, that's just kind of a. Like you said, motorists will learn that it doesn't apply, that they're not getting fined and, um. It it's kind of misinformation at that point, but I wouldn't say that it has to be removed within a certain timeframe either based off M U T C D. Guidance or anything, so. So, uh, I'll just hit on a couple of points from my written report real quick here, um. The, uh, street sweeping, uh, was completed by Streb shortly after we approved that. Uh, quotation, uh, in the April meeting. And, uh, normally they don't send me the invoice, but since they did, I included it in my report, um, and so that payment was included in the warrants list. Uh, which I think typically they just send straight to the city treasurer and city clerk. Uh, but that invoice solo was, uh, three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, so I've included that. Uh. I'll skip payment marking for right now, so, and then on Monroe Street, uh, obviously we have some reconstruction occurring. We have pay application number one was submitted and reviewed and, um. Uh, we concurred with the, the quantities that they submitted, uh, were probably actually further along than what they've, uh, requested for payment. At this point, but, um, that pay application, uh, was for the amount of forty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and. Four cents, so that was also included in the warrants list, uh, tonight, just to bring council's attention to that, um. For a construction update, the first phase of the roadway paving is complete and reopened to the residents, um, along with some driveways there. In that first section, the second half of the roadway was removed and similar to the first phase, we had. Uh, subgrade or dirt grade issues underneath the existing pavement, um, so. Initially, we cored out twelve inches of the, uh, the dirt grade. Uh, we were trying to allow it to dry out and then we've continually had rain events, um. So we were unable to get it to dry enough to get compaction, um, to pass compaction testing. Um, so we, we opted to excavate an additional six inches and, um, install an eighteen inch section of a. Modified subbase rock and so now that is installed, the forms are up as of Friday. And they're ready to pave as soon as it stops raining, so, um. Hopefully it will dry out tomorrow or early Thursday and we can get that second section paved in and, um. Keep moving along on that, on that work, so. Uh, asphalt patching project, I spoke with, uh, the contractor. They expect to start work next month, in the next few weeks possibly, um. So you may see them out working on that. And then, uh, I'll come back to, so twenty twenty-four pavement marking, uh, so we got a quotation from L L Pelling Painting Division who's done. The, the pavement marking for, for several years in University Heights. Uh, and the budget amount for F Y twenty-four twenty-five was twelve thousand five hundred dollars and the, the quotation. They actually utilized, uh, the same, uh, unit prices for many of the line items as last year. And that totaled to twelve thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents. So, uh, we, we would recommend approval of that quotation. And so before council tonight is a, a consideration of resolution number twenty-four twenty-five. To accept the quotation for the twenty twenty-four pavement marking project.
Thank you. So as, uh, Ryan said, uh, is there a motion for resolution twenty-four twenty-five?
No motion.
Motion by Doug, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tim, discussion. Roll call vote.
I just always like to check in. This is, I know, I think it was Troy in the, in the past has been attentive to like the good paint. As opposed to the not as good paint, and I assume this is the good stuff that's going to stick around a while.
Uh, I guess, I'm sorry, what, is there a section of town you're saying is better than others or?
Oh, I just remember historically, this has been an issue where we had this, the decision and it would wear off a lot more quickly if it was a certain grade of paint. Um, but I assume this is, this is the stuff you've been using recently, the same like quality of paint and everything.
Yeah, so over the last, so I think it was three years ago, we started using two different types of paint in town. Yeah, you're, you're right, so. We started using what we call high build, which is still a water-based paint, which is what, uh, the basic waterborne paint i- is. It's just, it's basically double layered and, and a thicker, uh, application of that paint. Um, so we've been using that in our higher traffic and sort of like school crossing areas, so. To try not to explode the cost, we haven't been implementing that throughout the entire city. Uh, we still use waterborne paint on like the long lines, so the double yellow center lines that don't get crossed as often, if that makes sense, um. And then some other crosswalks that, uh, that just don't seem to wear as poorly, so, um. So that's, we, we've strategically picked which places, so right now we're kind of at fifty fifty of the two different types of paint.
That answers my question. Thank you for being careful on that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah. There is a, there is a third grade that's, that's more, much more expensive and it's, it's called durable. Uh, so it's, it's used like on the interstate, but we don't, we don't use that. It, that takes special machines to install and there's only two contractors in the whole state that can, can perform that work, so.
Okay, any other questions for Ryan? So we have a. Motion and a second for resolution twenty-four twenty-five, uh, roll call vote.
Moore.
Aye.
Schroder.
Aye.
Swales.
Aye.
Gunn.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, uh, Doug, did you have anything? To add?
No, no. Really? Maybe to tell the.
I appreciate you helping with Monroe Street and figuring that out too, with all the rain and everything and.
Pretty gooey under there.
Thank you. Uh, so we'll go on to building zoning and sanitation. Tim, did you have anything to add?
No, uh. It sounds like the issue at the, the neighbor's house is getting resolved. And I was able to, on, uh, my role with the Convention Visitors Bureau. Is able to take part in the installation of Cameron's and Archie's. Hurries up front as well as twelve others downtown, but. Team Echo. Six teams that went out April thirtieth. In the middle of the night to install them, so. And I will miss the next meeting. The last meeting was mainly about the hurricanes, though.
Great, okay, thank you. Any questions for Tim? Thank you. We'll go on to E Government. Lisa, you submitted a written report. Very nice written report, thank you. And I'm glad you pointed out the things for cleanup day, the things we can have and mostly can't have. And because, uh, Johnson County Refuge L R S. Was relieved to hear there would be people present because they just don't want everybody throwing everything in there. And, uh, yeah, so anyway, um. We're gonna have a nice big. Roll off for that day, thanks. And you're gonna volunteer and John. And Chief. And Pat Yegi's gonna volunteer again and anybody who wants to come, it's between nine and eleven thirty. And, uh, so anyway.
And if you're there as a volunteer, you get first crap as the two good to throw away.
Oh. Good point, Lisa.
And there's good stuff.
There are, there are some amazing finds.
Okay, thank you. Uh, are there any announcements other than that one? Okay, is there any objection to adjournment? I got this one down, Pat. Right now, the meeting's adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks, everyone.